Before a call of meeting in order tonight, I'd like to have our city manager, Jim Anderson, lead us into the political leaders. I'd like to have President Chester Davis to say a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and the sown.
Our Father and our God is again that a few of your servants come together, oh God, for the betterment of our community. And we thank you for allowing us, oh God, for this union. We pray that you'll bless our hearts and our minds, oh God, as we sit down and discuss the business of our city and our nation and our country as a whole. We pray that you'll bless those minds as we make those proper decisions. Bless our country, bless those fighting men, oh God, in our country. We just thank you for this opportunity and give you the praise, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our now called a meeting of City of Port St. Joe, in order. First thing on our agenda is the, uh, we've got two minutes to work on. We have the regular commission meeting from 3/2018 and a workshop meeting we had on 3/2018. Uh, if I had a chance to look those over, or I need a motion to approve.
Salute.
Motion Commissioner Lowry, have a second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Langston, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forward. All right. Port St. Joe Reader Pavilion, AC, uh, bills are here and we'll discuss some of the things that we might have talked about in the meeting a little farther down the line, I think, maybe. So, uh, without that, uh, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. Um, the only thing I have really, and it's really not much, is the Carrigan lease agreement for the lot on Reed Avenue. I know before the last meeting, I had emailed you guys all a copy of that lease agreement and bef- and I got a copy of it to Mr. Carrigan, but I've yet to hear from him. I left a couple messages, he hasn't gotten back to me yet. So I haven't got any feedback from him. And any of you could feel free to call me, I don't have a copy of it tonight, but if you have any questions about that, just feel free to call me, I'll talk to you about it and answer the questions.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Yes, please.
Uh, the only thing I, I just want to hear, kind of from the board, and what I've heard from constituents out in public, um, is I'm getting mixed feelings on the spending on leasing that, that parcel. Um, thirty-year lease, but spending, uh, city dollars, uh, on a, a restaurant there. So, I just, I kinda wanted just to hear from the board and to see where, where you guys were at, um, but, kind of fifty-fifty from what I'm hearing out of the public.
And Commissioner, one of the things that I asked our city attorney to, to address was a, uh, a clause in that agreement that would give us first right of refusal and thirty years to purchase that back. Um, and it is, it is spending tax dollars, but it's sales tax generated for the purpose of downtown revitalization that we will be spending. Uh, and I think this is definitely gonna help business downtown. And so, I mean, I, I would be for this and love the fact that there's a clause and we can purchase it at the end of thirty years.
Um, with that said, um, I really think that it'd be a good idea to have a restroom. I mean, uh, maybe spending tax dollars, but it's a good way to spend those dollars. I mean, it's gonna, it's, um, like you said before, thirty years and you're gonna need a restroom somewhere eventually, so I think it'd be a good move.
And I think the other thing to look at too, we're not pigeonholing ourselves into we have to build one as soon as we sign the lease. We got thirty years, we can let it sit if we want to.
Yeah. It also worked pretty good since it lives on the lot with just a couple quarter-pot, if anybody knows that.
Sure. Well, for, for a dollar a year for thirty years, I think that it'd be crazy not to snatch up.
All right, so you just wait to hear back from?
From Mr. Carrigan and from you guys, if you have any feedback on, to Commissioner Lowry's. If you look at Article fifteen, I, I have it set up with his, and I haven't got any, I asked Mr. Carrigan when talking to him the first time about the right of first refusal during the whole term. And at the end, um, if you look during the term of the lease, if they tried to sell it, we got right of first refusal. And at the end of the lease term, if we give them ninety days notice, we get an appraiser that we both pick and we pay fair market value for the property at that time. That's what it's written up now. I haven't, I said, he hasn't called me back and said yes, no, or anything yet, but he said that he was, he was gonna be very lenient with this.
All right. Anything else for us?
Um, that is all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, one other thing. I don't know, I did email all of you a copy of the letter that I sent to American Forestry Management with regards to the, the water and them driving the trucks around it. Just wanted to make sure you all got it and see if you have any questions about it. It's pretty self-explanatory, it's, don't do it anymore.
I think the only thing I, I noticed in that letter is we're not denying them access and it basically says we're, we, we are what it, we're, I don't mind if they erect a temporary bridge across, you know, a section. Uh, we just don't want them transport, yeah, transporting wood around that or just even crossing right there at that bulkhead. So, I just make that, just clear.
I will. I thought I tried to make that clear, just knocked down around the end, you know, they had, it's been, like you, who's pointed out for numerous years that those bridges going across.
Right. I just wanna, I, I wanna make sure they know we aren't denying.
I'll clarify that with that.
Access.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Jim, old business.
Yes, sir. First item is MLK landscaping. Commissioner Langston's been working with staff to do some beautifications on MLK. Get an update for us tonight?
Um, I got with Commissioner Quinn and, uh, he wants to put some, some extra things to it, so, uh, we'll just tailor it to next time and I'll bring a proposal of, um, what's gonna cost and what the county's gonna put in to help us out.
Jim?
On the new business, the first item we have is Resolution 2018-04 Centennial Bill Grant Application. As you're aware, we got denied again this year, second time, hopefully the third time with the charm. Before you deny it, it's a resolution, uh, to submit another grant application for the next fiscal year.
Jim, are we gonna just roll that money over?
That would be at the staff's recommendation.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Lowry, have a second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Ashbrook, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forward.
So, ahead, Mayor, uh, Mr. Graham is not here tonight. If you have any questions for public works, I'll try to help you out with that.
Jim, I've got one thing under, under, uh, new business.
New business?
Uh, I was approached today by Chester Davis and he mentioned something about the Triumph Fund, the monies that they applied for, for the North Port St. Joe Project Area Coalition, uh, has not died, but they would like additional support from this board with discussion on that last, uh, the last presentation that we received, whether we're still in support of the project or not, and he'd like us to set up some time to meet and talk about it. Chester, do you wanna add to that? Is that about right?
That's about right.
Okay. So, that's for us to think about, do we wanna set a, a time to meet about it?
What works for you? What kind of time, Frank?
Well, the time, Frank, will be based up, you can have the twelve o'clock Monday through Friday, uh, based upon time we get time to be involved, because he's in Canada.
Why don't you reach out to staff?
Okay.
And get some base little work, and Jim, could you just call us and let us know?
The only thing I have, we just wanna make sure that when we put the application back in, uh, one of the things they're requesting is that it's not a private and we're gonna go through the city, and that's a blessing for the city also.
All right. Then, we do with John, uh, surface work?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, really don't have anything for tonight unless the board has questions.
How's your filter?
They're performing well, they really are, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Finance director?
Uh, we're moving forward with the Jones Homestead Project, the ordering materials. We certainly hope to start, uh, by mid-May, um, and currently have twenty-six confirmed sign-ups and we're, we think we can get to fifty and, and once we start construction, we think that'll pick up.
All right. Questions for Mike? Voice work? I have nothing to do with this. Questions from anything, Jim? All right. This city is in.
Sorry, slow down progress again. Something need to go. Uh, I'll, I'll start with the long ones in here. Uh, just back in, twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen Water Management District reached out, uh, to the city and asked, you know, if you have any stormwater needs, if you have any projects, stormwater related, that, um, you know, you might need some funding for. And so, that time, the city put together, I think, three applications, three different applications and submitted them. Um, didn't get funded. Fast forward to twenty fifteen, Water Management District asked the same question, city reapplied with the same three projects, um, and they didn't get funded. At that time, they've just been kinda sitting in their archive. And so, a couple of months ago, Water Management reached out to the city and said, hey, we found these two projects that y'all had submitted, are you still interested? We may get some money later this year for them. Um, and so, that was just kinda on the staff level, said, yeah, obviously we're interested in that. And so, um, they're getting to the point, Water Management's getting to the point now that, um, you know, they kinda wanna affirm, yeah, the city's on board with it or not. And it's one thing, I don't, I don't think this current board has probably seen it, or if you've seen it, it's been several years and we probably all forgot about it. So, tonight, just kinda wanna give you a brief recap of what they are, um, and make sure, see if you have any comments we need to add. We can still, still in the comment period, but this week, we need to do those comments over Water Management. So, um, the two projects that they've indicated they could have funds for later this year, one of them is putting together a stormwater master plan for the city. Uh, if you have one, it's pretty old, it's probably twenty years old if you even have one. Um, so, the, the goal of that would be, you know, to identify areas that we need work on and then you can start from that plan, start trying to address it with the funding to, you know, to implement it. So, putting together a stormwater master plan is one of the projects. The other project is, uh, what's, what's called Forest Park Stormwater Improvements. So, uh, kinda big picture, there's about a two-hundred-and-seventy-acre drainage basin in this area, kinda inside the yellow line. It all comes down through this area, this is Butgriffin Lake, it comes down through here, down to St. Joe Bay. So, it's about two-hundred-and-seventy or so acres that go through the ditch that runs right through the ballpark, um, you know, down straight to the bay, there's really nothing stopping it, there's not a lot of treatment happening. And, um, that was one, the application was put in was to almost mirror Butgriffin Lake. Um, probably not the size of Butgriffin Lake, but the same idea. So, when Butgriffin Lake was put in, it treats water coming from the south and the north that comes around that way. There's a weir, a concrete weir that water runs over, um, stops a lot of silt and things and the pollutants from going into the bay. And so, the idea with this application was twofold, one, to get a weir built, probably in this location. Build approximately two-and-a-half acre stormwater pond, and then also replace the pipe that's, uh, under the Tenth Street ball fields that's been failing, replace that pipe. And so, um, the two-and-a-half acre, just to give you an idea of two-and-a-half acres, the north half of Butgriffin Lake, roughly two-and-a-half acres, so something like that, um, that's the gist of the project. And so, you know, the timing of all this is, uh, not, the timing of it, we've been talking about the ball fields, we've been talking about what's going on down there, expanding that, losing that. These two projects aren't related, um, you won't be able to use, if you were to construct a pond, you won't be able to use that pond for any future development. That's the same language it's in. The pond is built at George Core Park, the pond is built at Ball Sale, Butgriffin Lake, all of those funding agreements came through Water Management, all of those have a caveat in there that you can't put any new development in it. So, these two projects, only because of the location are similar, you know, in any way, uh, they're really not related at all. If you, if you do the ball field stuff down there, um, you know, the only, the only overlap would just be the location of wherever this pond went, but it wouldn't be used for that. So, if you move forward, the ball fields are not, I just wanna kinda separate those two out, 'cause they're really separate, but, um, that's kinda the gist of it. Uh, it's, I think in total, the funding that they've got in the application is a little over nine-hundred-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand is what's in the, the application Water Management's put together. Uh, and I think their process is, best we know, is it'll go, um, it's getting funded through NERTA, one of the phases of NERTA, and so, it'll be several months, probably in the fall, before we know one way or the other if they're all gonna fund it. Um, but, um, just kinda the timeline where we are. So, is there any questions on that, or if anybody in the public maybe has questions on that? Um, in terms of exact locations of where the pond would go, that's not been nailed down, and I don't think has to be nailed down tonight by any means. The shape and configuration of that pond, um, you know, you have room, I, I would think anywhere between Tenth and Sixteenth Street you could put it and it would serve its purpose. Um, again, the shape and configuration can be determined later too, but, um, that's kinda what I had on that. If you all have any questions, anything else I need to? So, just for clarification, the scope of this project is to help preserve the bay? Correct. It is, it treats the runoff before it gets into the bay, that's exactly right, which is not happening currently from that two-hundred-and-seventy acres. And so, that's it, is, is to protect the bay. It's an outfall directly to the bay that we're gonna intercept and treat. And each, part of this grant actually is, uh, there's a monitoring component that after it's built, you still have to go out after certain rain events and test the water coming in the pond and the water going out of the pond to prove that it's doing what we want it to do. So, um, that is the purpose, is to, is to protect the bay.
After those builds, a big push to clean up the bays and the waterways the best we can. This is another way that, um, Water Management District and DEP, this would actually flow through a DEP, so those folks, the governmental bodies are, feel this would be a good project to help clean up the bay even more, because if you look at Butgriffin Lake, it's really, really cleaned up the water before it's discharged into our bay. This would do the same thing on the other side. We don't know exactly where this would go, but this is a chance to be able to do those kinda things with money that we would have, a million dollars, those kinda things.
The way it's set up, it's a no-match, you know, deal. It's, except fully funded through the NERTA process and so, um, you know, that's, that's an upside to it.
I did get a call today that they are asking for input, they do want us to give back, look at the numbers, feel that we're comfortable with those, because they do want to submit an application, so time is of the essence, I did get that call today for the Water Management.
Do you need a vote for support today on this?
I would recommend, Jim.
If y'all are comfortable with it? Yes, sir. I mean, to me, it almost sounds too good to be true, but.
This is the same pot of money you guys actually did your boat ramp.
BP money, yeah.
We would've never had the funds to do the kinda work, so it's the same theory.
It is. Provided there's no strings attached, I make a motion to move forward.
We have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, have a second.
I'll second for the application.
Yeah, that was it for the application.
Okay. Well, first and I'll say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries forward. All right.
The Long Avenue, the State for All County application that's in, has been submitted, it's involved in their court, we'll wait, um, you know, a few weeks later, a month, we'll touch base, touch back with them, touch base with them, but their next hearing's in May, so we got several weeks before, before anything. Um, and then, the boat ramp, I don't really have anything new to add. Um, I know it's been really busy down there, I haven't heard positive or negative from the folks that are using it, but there's been a lot of traffic in there, I don't know if y'all have heard anything, but if you have, let me know. Um, that's kinda where we are, that's all I had tonight, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Clay?
Long, the Long Avenue project, uh, you said they didn't tell you how long it's gonna take for them to?
They, their next meeting is in May, and so, uh, we won't know anything before May, and, uh, I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but it'll be another four or five weeks before we know anything. That was just for the engineering, correct? Correct. So, that's kinda their process, you get the design money and then you turn around, get, submit them construction plans, but usually, I mean, I can't think of an example where if they give you the design money, they're, I mean, they're invested, they're not gonna tell you no on the construction money and that. So, they, they're gonna accept the project, that's just the process that goes through, and we won't know anything really until May, so.
Commissioner Langston, they did reach out to us on Monday, they're trying to tentatively set up a meeting, meet with the staff on Friday to go over the application process. So, Mr. Smaller did get the application in and they, they proceeded, they planned a meeting, hopefully Friday.
Appreciate it.
Jim, on that, so, I, I mean, just talking to the county and I, I've been told we need to spend that road bond money by the end of the year. Um, I, I've been told that several times, but I, I believe Commissioner Buzette spoke to someone, said there might be a caveat, so we need to, if there's a way to figure that out, we gotta figure it out, because we're not gonna be able to, I mean, that, it's gonna go into next year.
Absolutely. It's probably two thousand and nineteen before we hear where we get the final budget for the project, so, yeah, so we need to make some decisions.
So, I, I'm just, just get with, uh, I don't know, maybe, if you can get with county administration, get with clerk's office to see if there's a caveat or something where we can utilize that money next year, um, but, I just, that's a big concern, because the paving's gonna be last.
All right. County enforcement, everybody's getting their reports, quickly. Police Department?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything on the agenda tonight for to ask questions.
I'd just like to say that, uh, I appreciate you picking up and look at the, um, the officers on Avenue A, it really helps the traffic flow, the, the speed is, is slowing down and, uh, you can tell a big difference, I appreciate it.
Good. We, uh, along those same lines, we, John's crew put the speed limit signs up at the Methodist Church two weeks ago, so, we've been hitting that kinda hard, we haven't, we haven't written any tickets, we've been getting out a lot of warnings, but if you hear anything about it, ask people on Facebook, make some negative comments, but it is what it is, and it's for the safety of our children and we'll all stand up for that.
Well, Chief, coming from Twentieth towards the church, that sign is very difficult to see, and I think I reached out to Jim about possibly some of that reflector on the pole itself, uh, might help. Uh, it took me three attempts to figure out where it was.
Going towards the Methodist Church from Twentieth, okay.
All right, anything else for the chief?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. City clerk?
Mrs. Mayor, nothing particular, but just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Langston, to Commissioner Lowry, being unopposed. We do have Mr. Buzette, who is not seeking reelection, and four people did qualify, so we will have an election this year.
Thank you. That it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any citizens wish to be heard tonight on anything? Sign in for me, please.
That's just a piece of stuff, that's true. Basically, I just want to, um, make a appeal to the city for the use of the Joltean Gym. We wanna make sure that we have all avenues clear, because we want to make this a, a city event rather than just a North Port St. Joe event. Um, in the past, we've had issues with what we can use out there and what we could not use, uh, based upon, uh, what the workforce is doing out there. Uh, but we want them to have a clear pass, if we possibly can, to make sure that, uh, all the entities are in place so that we can have a grand event. We've already put the date in for June sixteenth, uh, and as I said, we want to invite all of the city to be a part of this one. We're trying to make it grow, uh, so that, uh, we can get rid of the railroad tracks in our hearts and our minds, so that, you know, when we come out, it can, it'll be a city event rather than just a North Port St. Joe event. Uh, but like I said, we wanted to clear that avenue, make sure that, if there's anything we need to do in order to make sure that the place is available for us, we want to take note of that, so that we can take care of that. Uh, and, uh, we've already put in the date, uh, the application, where the city will make money off of the application, so, if there's anything else we need to do, we need to know from the city, uh, in the best.
Tell us what we all need.
Well, basically, we need access to the gym full, access to the gym, chairs.
Bathroom, kitchen?
Yes, and the kitchen.
You said?
Now, the kitchen use, we're only gonna use it basically just to serve food out of, and maybe refrigerate.
Won't be kitchen.
Ice, but we won't be using the stoves or anything, we won't be cooking.
How about tables and chairs?
The tables and chairs we will need, they're in there, uh, and we have always made sure that they were secure and taken care of.
Hasn't that been a problem over?
Yeah, it's been a problem, especially when it's time to use it, we always had to go find people at the locker.
We have many tables and chairs now, Jim, anyway?
We have a few, Mayor, we, we have a slam number.
Kinda beat up, Mayor, last time I saw him.
Few of them over on the, not the side where, well, on the women's bathroom side of that storage unit, uh, the few are moved up, but it's not many.
Can you talk to Ms. Jill, will you? See if we can use whatever we need to use and, uh, we do have responsible people to take care of the stuff. I mean, that's her main concern, is, you know, if nothing gets destroyed, anything like that.
And if there's a bond on it, we'll take care of that also, we'll make sure that anything that's torn up will be repaired. But the problem is, like I said, at the last minute, last year, we have, uh, all of a sudden, there's a door we can't get in, or the ladies can't use the restroom. We men can kinda, you know, get to the port apartment, but we don't want our women having to go to, you know, outside toilets when we already have those available.
Right.
So, we just wanna make sure that the pathways are clear.
I appreciate you telling, uh, let us know, because some people went to Friday before to let you know and, uh, they just stuck, but I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, no one else? Come on up.
I'm back.
We got a meeting on the left.
Okay. I, I came tonight, my name is Jill Beatty, I live at eight oh eight Marvin. Um, I came tonight because I know that Mr. Buzette was trying to get you all to speak with one voice at the meeting at the eleventh. And, Mr. Ashbrook, I hope you got a copy of our, where we stole your idea about frisbee golf, but it's a good one. Um, and, um, is one last chance to speak to you before the meeting on the eleventh, and I don't know if this is relevant to bring you tonight or if we should wait, but, um, I've been collecting signatures, too. Just walking the path, going to my neighbors, I have fifty-six residence signatures and seventeen visitor's signatures. I figured the visitor's signatures were valid because part of the money is bed tax funds, part of this is supposed to be tourist development. The tourists who walk that path are pretty appalled at the idea of losing all those trees and losing the beauty there, so, I don't know if it would be appropriate for me to present these tonight, if you want me to hang on to them and continue to gather names, or what can be done.
I'm gonna be there if you waited till eleven.
Ma'am, are these signatures, what is, what is the wish of the people that signed that to? Scale it back or to keep it?
I will read you. I will read you what I, what I wrote on this.
Okay, sure.
"As Gulf County residents, we ask that the city of Port St. Joe and Gulf County not sacrifice green space, wildlife habitat, and over one hundred mature trees to construct a sports complex in a residential area along the Port City Trail between Eighth and Sixteenth Street. We request the city and county consider the Field of Dreams site on land donated by the St. Joe Company to the city of Port St. Joe for this purpose."
Okay.
The visitors one says the same thing, only it says "as visitors" to Gulf County.
And my only argument, and I'll start the discussion, because I do think that we all need to kinda be on the same page, um, rather than build another park, I'd like to see us fix up what we have. My personal opinion would be to fix the concessions, fix the restrooms, rebuild the fields right there, uh, but as they are now, not, not adding to it.
No problem with that.
And that's it.
I, I'm right behind the ball fields, I would kinda miss them if they went. I, I enjoy it, but I just don't wanna see it expanded and parking lots and trees gone.
And I spoke to several people at the county and it's, it sounds like they're willing to do what the will of this board is, so, that's just my personal opinion, guys, on what I would like to see happen. Uh, let's not add another burden to our already stretched dollar here and add another park to have to take care of, let's fix up what we have, if possible.
I'd, I'd say, I'd like for, if she could put those signatures on the record, because, I mean, I'm not hearing from a whole lot of people on it, um, but fifty people, I mean, that are against putting it there, I'd like for, put that on the record, I mean, one.
Can you just get a copy of that to Ms. Charlotte for the record here?
I can.
And then you can continue to collect signatures.
Okay.
And, and two, um, one thing, I mean, if we do decide to, you know, with upgrades, as you spoke about, I mean, we've got to figure out some parking, 'cause they're parking in, um, on the right of way in people's yards and, I mean, it's, it's-
Sure. And right there on 10th Street, I see an opportunity to add a center row of parking, putting speed bumps at both ends, so people have to slow down to 10 mile an hour speed limit and boom, you're in a parking lot with additional spaces. It's not gonna add a whole lot of spaces, but it'll, it'll help. It's packed down there. Oh, you know, it's right by there, by our houses.
If you fix 8th Street, they could park on the edges. Without falling off.
I, I, I agree with you. 8th Street would be, uh, it definitely needs to be fixed.
Or abandon and bridge it.
Right. That is, that's a, that's a nice question. Thanks for your information.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, how you doing?
I'm doing pretty good.
If you don't mind.
Oh, well. I'm Elaine Rogers. I live at 810 Marvin Avenue. We spoke a couple of times.
Yeah.
Yeah. Been waiting for your call back.
I didn't know I was supposed to call you back. I thought I was just gonna check into it, 'cause I wanted to call you. I did check into it, spoke to several people, but make sure, hopefully that it wouldn't happen again, but then again, all you can do is ask and say it's not the right thing to do and if people don't cooperate, there's not much you can do other than build a fence there. And I'm all for doing that.
Well, I've been there since 2004. I was the first house spilt there on the spilt. And since I've lived there, it's been nothing but trouble, not from the kids, but from the parents, unfortunately. And it continues. And I've approached the past mayor, I've approached you, and I've also, the police, they know me very well. Chief, well, what used to be Chief Hershey, he knows me. Um, it's a joke, excuse me, but in the past, to call the police, 'cause they get tired of coming, the parents, they don't wanna agree to cooperate with me. They apparently, which you didn't either, know where the property line is, and they tell me that they're gonna do what they wanna do and they seem to do that. It continues. I get their trash in my yard. I have bought property pegs and put across there, I put tape, I put no trespassing. The parents, not the children, pull up the pegs, tape, property tape and all, the property signs, break them, throw them in my yard and laugh about it.
Uh, what, uh, excuse me, but I don't know what's- It's right down there, the ball field there by the triple A field, first baseball field side, third base side.
Marvin Avenue.
Right behind there.
Yeah, it wasn't sure.
About five, six houses. Have you had any other trouble since the first day this year? And I know you had that one incident the first day.
No, no, I haven't, but, um-
Well, I did speak to people.
Right.
And asked for the police to be courteous of the neighbors that was living there.
Right.
And, and my thoughts was if we're just gonna shove, the city needs to, 'cause you just tend to put a fence up along that avenue if that's what it's for, tape.
Something needs to be done. It's not the children.
Yes, ma'am.
It is the parents that could not cooperate. Not only that, I don't know if they don't know what property line is or they don't care. They ride golf carts to the yard, we've got ruts that we have to fill in. Like I said, the trash is thrown in the yard, they don't respect us. Uh, just different stuff like that that I am tired of as a taxpayer putting up with. I don't wanna be told that, well, I knew the ball field was there when I bought the house. That's beside the point. When I pay my taxes, I pay just like everybody else, so I would expect the respect everyone else has.
Right.
Something needs to be done, and that's why, as you say, I understand that you don't want to remove, you know, move the ball field 'cause of the cost, but then again, I would like the ball field moved because of what I'm going through. When the ball fields go, when the ball games are going, we cannot even go in our yard and enjoy our own yard that we brought to home and pay taxes on.
Do you think a fence would fix that?
Honestly-
Some type of wooden fence?
A wooden fence, possibly.
Five foot tall? How many?
Possibly, because a chain link fence is a joke. We had a neighbor that had it, I saw my back deck, and I watched the kids climb it and go into his yard.
Right. Well, I would be, you know, subject to putting a fence up there sometime, 'cause I know you had a problem. I was at your house probably three years ago.
Uh, last year. It was last year, the beginning of the season. Last year, the beginning of the season, and then this year.
This year. And, uh, I mean, I don't know anything else to do, but-
I don't either, but something needs to be done.
Exactly. So, uh, my suggestion would be we look in and put in some type of wooden fence up there. If there's one that you can move and take down after the season and put it back up just during the season. But something, 'cause I understand what you're going through.
We have one other problem. About three, two or three weeks ago, we had a lady bring her child into our yard and use it for a bathroom.
Yeah, that was on the day of baseball, I spoke with you about that.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, that is not the first time, and I'm sure it won't be the last time, and it was not the child's fault. The child was, I'm just guessing, two years old or something, but the child's mother or whoever it was that had the child surely knew better-
Oh, yeah.
-than that.
They just have no respect.
There's, there's no res, no respect, and, uh, apparently they have no morals because if an adult were to do something like that, y'all had him down there in jail.
Yeah.
I mean, and you can't blame it on the child when the, the parent or whoever the lady was brings them over there to do it.
And they get angry with me when I say something. They think I should let them do this, but I don't think it's right.
Is your property a little bit more accessible from the field than maybe some of the other properties? Only as well-
Well, I already say-
They don't normally do it in middle people's yard for-
Yeah, ours goes right, um, ours is-
Our, our property line is, I'm just guessing, I'd have to measure the, the property peg.
Yes.
But when they went up there a couple of years ago and extended the dugout, took the, tore the old dugout down and extended the other one, there's probably maybe four foot between the dugout and our yard.
Now?
Yes. And, uh, the, uh, the kids-
It's not the kids.
Or, or playin' ball, it's not them. They, the kids themselves are trying to have, entertain themselves, have fun playing ball. It's some, it's mostly some of the parents and small kids that don't know any better that their parents are bringing them down into the yard to use for a bathroom or play yard or whatever.
And my insurance is what's gonna happen when someone gets hurt in our yard and the parents won't, my insurance to pay for their, their bills.
Especially when you have children, uh, young, young kids driving golf carts down through the yard. If they was to run over one of them small children, it would hurt them.
Right.
I can't have anything in my backyard. Everything is up against my house, all my plants and all. They busted flower pots, taking the plants and throwing them away, you know, in the yard. I had banana trees. You know how far back those are set in my yard? You've been to my house. They busted them with baseball bats. I have, I can have nothing in my yard in the back, no swings or nothing.
Jim, can we get John to go down there and just look at what kinda, how much length of fencing we might need to put there to, because I think that's the only thing that will solve the problem. Unfortunately, we can't make people do what they should do.
Right.
What they shouldn't do, we can't make-
I understand that.
We can put a fence up there that they can't get over or they can't get around. I think that will probably solve your problem.
Okay.
And so that's what we'll-
That's fine. It can stay up as far as I'm concerned. I just need something because we can't stop them. Apparently, no offense, police can't stop them unless you stand there constantly, and that's not gonna work.
Right.
So we need something to stop it.
Well, what we can do to fence idea and, uh-
Before it gets out of hand.
You know, there used, there used to be a wire-
Oh, yeah.
It was a, I called, they matched it down, is all we did.
Chief Hershey had the, came out through there and, uh, had that wire fence put up.
They didn't, right?
And the, and the day, the day- Chicken wire fence type thing.
The day it was put up, the next ball game they had, kids and adults were pushing the wire fence down for them to get over the fence to come into the yard.
And then we have to try to pull it back up to be able to mow.
And it's, uh, it's aggravating to be out there mowing and hit a baseball with your lawn mower. I mean, it's, uh, I can live with that basically because I know they didn't wanna lose the baseball to start with, but for the parents to tear the fence up that the city put up to go get a baseball is ridiculous.
We'll, we'll put a wooden fence up there, Mayor.
Yeah.
We'll show them they're gonna look at it.
Well, the only thing I'm gonna do next is put a camera up, and then the next thing I'll do is an attorney, and that's the only thing I'm gonna do next.
Right.
And I don't wanna go that far.
We'll try to stop them to do that. We'll try to see if we can get this fence put up.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't, I don't wanna push it that far, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't want any trouble with anybody in town. That's not what I'm here for.
Yes, ma'am.
But on the other side, I wanna be left alone, and I like to have to put things in my yard.
Sure.
And then y'all, whoever grew the plant up for the new fields, you have the back of the field at the people's backyards.
That's I don't-
If a kid, if, if somebody gets lucky and hits a good ball over the fence, it's gonna go right, probably right into somebody's backyard. Uh, you know, then they're gonna be wanting to go get your ball, which I fully understand them wanting to do that, but what they're gonna do when the ball comes over the fence and hits somebody else in the head or hits your animal and injures somebody, 'cause the balls will be being hit towards the house.
Mr. Mayor, we need his name, please.
Yes, sir. Will we get your name?
Mark.
Yes, sir. If you could write it down on the, okay, paper for me, yes, sir. All right, anyone else?
I'm Claire Morris, and I live at 1304 Marvin Avenue, and I'm here about the park expansion. First, I wanna say to you and to whoever worked with it, the blues in the park was really enjoyable. Really had a good time, talked to a lot of people there, and, um, I think between the city and the chamber and all those that got together and did that, it was really a very enjoyable time, so kudos for that. Um, next thing, in the park. I was upset with the trees and still am all of the time, but as I looked into pickleball, I know when y'all, the plan came forward, y'all voted for it unanimously. I'm not sure if any of you understand, I didn't until I started looking at pickleball and the noise and you'd probably be real interested in it, the lawsuits and all the trouble that cities are having that have put pickleball courts in residential areas. They're talking about putting 12 in here. There are lawsuits that have been on the television in, um, all over Florida, all over retirement communities where cities have put these in, and they're now paying for sound barriers. They're removing the courts. There are lawsuits to get them to stop playing, use different kind of ball. The noise is unbelievable for people. Pickleball does not belong anywhere near residents, and even the Pickleball Association says that now. They say, "Do not put pickleball courts near homes." It doesn't work. It's just really loud. We went to Mexico Beach and I thought, doesn't sound so bad, and then our neighbor, the branches went down there and they happened to talk to a guy that lived about half a block down from it. He's ready to sell his house. He said he's not sure he can sell his house. He said, "They can't stand the noise anymore. It's just morning till night, all year long." So, I mean, tournaments would be bad enough for us, but from what I understand and from what I've read, just search pickleball noise problems and you will have all the information you need. Um, the other thing is, you said that you weren't getting a lot of comment on this. I first found out about the plans for the park on February 6th, and I searched for an hour and a half trying to find a plan. Could not find the plans anywhere. As I've walked the field, um, walked the park, um, approached people that live here, they say, "Oh, yeah, they're building it out. Build dreams." And the public still doesn't know. We're doing our best to let everybody know, but there are a lot of people, there's still, there's still no reference to it on the city website. Now, you can get to parks, and you get to Port City Trail, and that's on the Visit Gulf also. And interesting, on the Port City Trail link that's on the site and with the Visit Gulf, they show beautiful drawn pictures of the park, and it's the trees and the wildlife and all the green open spaces. It doesn't show the bathrooms, the banks of courts, and again, uh, baseball fields. You're showing the natural beauty. I talked to people today that were staying out at Indian Pass. They came here, they saw the, the Port City Trail on the website, and they came here as a family of five, riding bicycles, little kids, playing on the gym, and I told them about what was happening. They said, "Well, we're just visiting here." They couldn't believe that this was happening. But there, there are so many people being attracted to this city and wanting to come to what you have built and what we have there. So, I mean, I hear you saying, well, you know, maybe just fix what we've got, and certainly fix it for the neighbors that are already impacted with the noise. I mean, I think that's, that'd be great, but let's improve what we've got with fixing up the fields, but again, stay in that footprint. Let's not create problems that other cities are trying to undo now at great cost. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else? Martha Swire, we'll start with you.
Uh, just to pick up on some of what she mentioned, I, that's one thing I didn't realize, um, like the attorney, if he could, do a little bit of research on lawsuits regarding this pickleball court, because that was a big, um, one of my big deals as far as adding those, those courts. It's probably the fastest growing sport in America, um, and we've got a ton of people that play it here, uh, in our city.
A lot of injuries, too.
Um, but if, if, it's gonna be a sound issue, we, I mean, we need to, and I can imagine it's loud. I, I can't, um, but, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, other than that, um, yeah, I, I got no opposition, uh, this term. It humbles me, um, that, that was the case, and, uh, I'm excited to do another two-year term for this community. I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Ashbrook?
I'd like to have one of those. Um, all I've really got, Mayor, is, uh, I had, I had a citizen come to me and, and while we're on the topic of looking at fences, uh, I mentioned, Jim, that down there at the boat ramp, one, there's, there's issues with parking. Uh, there's a lot of just vehicles without boat trailers parking down there at the boat ramp, um, and it's becoming an issue. Two, where the kids are playing there by the pavilion, the parking lot butts right up to it, and if we could do some sort of fencing along that back corner so when the kids are playing tag, uh, they're not running out into that parking lot, um, this person had told me I almost ran over a kid. They were just running out into the middle of the parking lot. So if we could put some kind of delineation between the lot and that pavilion, we can have John look at that as well. When we're looking at fencing, maybe we get a bulk deal. And that's all that I've got.
All right. Mr. Langston?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say I went unopposed and, uh, I'm excited to have a year to show everyone that I am the right guy for the job. I can do the job. I'm honest. Um, I made mistakes in the past, but keep, you, I always keep, I was always taught by my dad and my mom to keep my head up, keep working hard, do the right things, and good things will happen to you. Um, I teach my kids that, and, um, I like for, I like to see my constituents come out, give their opinion about things. I, I'm, I have open ears. Um, your opinion really means a lot to me. I think about it. I won't lie to you, and, um, I like going to bed, um, with a, with a clean slate and a good heart. One day I have to see my maker, and, and that really means a lot to me, so I promise you that you can trust me and I'll work hard and do the best that I can for you. Also, I'd like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Mr. David Alvarez and Ms. Inez Williams, they were appointed to the planning board. Um, I guess we'll get with them and tell them what days and, um, times the meetings are and, um, the street lights, um, I had a few people complaining on the north side about the street lights, how dim they are. Um, the older people, some of them are kinda afraid that people hiding back, you know, over there. over there. Sometimes it can get pretty dangerous sometimes, and what can we do about that? Do we get with Duke Energy or do we handle those things?
We actually paid Duke Energy for the lights that they service most of in the neighborhoods, Commissioner Mason. We've been put on the back burner for about eight months. We've been told that the hurricanes have delayed the new upgraded lights, the LEDs, but we are, we are on the list to get new LED lights all every time.
Okay.
We need to stay active.
Okay, also, the building out at Workforce, I went out there, and I go out in violent tip, we had a food pantry, they'll pass out food sometimes on Mondays, and over on the Workforce side, all the way to, I think it's the historical, Washington Heights historical thing, what Nathan does, and the, somebody's going to get hurt if we don't do anything about it, it's falling in, it's pretty bad. So if we can get John or somebody to go and.
Get cover going between?
The, the actual, the roof itself, yeah. The walk, when you walk on the sidewalks around, and the windows in the, in the Washington High Gym, I think about three or four of them broke. And also, they got, its backs are in there too, so, but I talked to the mayor about it. What do you say if they can do it? Is that done?
Well, there's a company, I got it, at my office, I have a card, and I meet probably the best people to call. So if you're telling them to call my office, we can give them that number. They're out of town a lot.
Okay, because some of that, some of the program is about to start, we've got our kids out there, and we need to try to get that worked out before then. But, but.
All right. And I don't have anything tonight, just need a motion to adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good.